Oh, I just sent.
Merci, Emile.
Oh. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here this evening for the first session on budget deliberations. So, Mr. Clerk, we do have quorum this evening. Everyone is here, essentially, in terms of conflict of interest declaration. Any council members would like to declare conflict of interest on the item of the agenda like budget discussions?
Ne voyons rien, merci.
There ain't no one, thank you. We are also broadcasting. I only need a motion to adopt the agenda. Move by Councilor Emile O'Brien, seconded by Councilor Joël Desprès. All in favor saying aye, against nay. It's been carried. Number five, unique item, budget deliberations. It will take most of the evening and most of tomorrow's evening and maybe more. So, Mr. CEO, you're starting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to thank you for your patience. I would like to thank you for your comments and since I started. And I would like to thank my staff. I do not do it enough and not publicly, and I do not have the opportunity to do it. We have great people working for us, working for the municipalities, so the management team. We are very fortunate to have people there like. And we have individuals who are proud to work for municipalities, so they're giving like all their heart to the municipality. The citizens and the services would deliver. And it's because of them, like every day, I can say I'm proud to work for Chediak. And I'm very happy to come to work. And the budget this evening was not prepared by Eve. It was presented by a team, like the directors of service and their employees at their charge. So, thank you for their work and their patience over the last two months since I came in. Through our financial situation and also to present my first budget with the town of Chediak. I was gonna say Maple Hills, but no. All my apologies, so. I present you like a quick little agenda, how we will be proceeding for the budget discussion. So, we'll start with a brief introduction and then we will talk about. And I think it's important like to talk about debt profile, debt profile for water and sewer. And then we'll end the discussion with the capital project. I prepare like a brief presentation. It will give you the pulse where we'll be going and I will do like a spoiler alert, like a teaser, like a movie. And I will tell you how, where the direction we should take and over the last hours and the next discussion. We will pack that stuff and we will present how we were able to get there, to those things. For the highlights for over the last, not the last year, but for this budget. We saw like 12.5% increase in our tax base assessment. So, it's a 1.9 billion dollars and it represents an increase of over 212 million dollars, millions compared to last year. I can tell you like the budget this year was prepared like with an emphasis, with the focus on the current and future needs. And also to consider our financial capacity. So, when we are talking about like the debt profile, it's important, you know, what is the financial situation? And we'll try to paint a picture where we can to get to develop like all the projects we would like to see and the services we would like to deliver. For the first time since the reform, there was a tool that was created, like a budget tool specifically created to help municipalities. We had different taxation rates. And it would help them to identify what is the real cost for a share services. What is the exact amount like all the citizens should pay regardless of the zone like you live in Chediak? What should be the real value of the share rate? So, we'll be sharing this amount with you because you might have some question, but why we are increasing? Or because long term is where we have to go. This is our roadmap financially. So, we'll be sharing this document with you. We also need like to have the continued investment in our infrastructure. Sorry, sure, the earlier, we have needs now, we're existing infrastructures we have to address. And we also have future needs that we have to consider. Not we need, we have in the infrastructure, but we have building, the way we are delivering the services. The needs we have to deliver the services, we have to consider them. And I want to remind you with all, with the taxation rate, with the tax base we have. I'm also giving this as a little thing, 1 cent in the former Chediak municipality, like an increase. 1 cent represent 130,000 dollars of revenue or reduction. For the former like LSDs that are now part of Chediak. It represents 70,000 for 1 cent of increase or decrease in their tax rate. So, when we're talking about increase and decrease, multiply, if you multiply with the increase or reduction. It gives you an idea of the global picture of the money we have. We would like also to present, do the addition of three new positions. One would be in the public works, the other one in community living and one in administration. And we will present this like during the operation budget. So, the debt profile. It's important to see what is the our financial picture. And we'll start with the with the water budget. Essentially, we all know, like I presume, we all say what we're talking about. We're talking about the debt ratio, like a municipality as in general should not have. Should not have more than 20% of debt to the borrowing board. So, when we see our existing profile with the, we are above of this one and we still have some needs like that we have to meet. The 20% is a guideline when it comes like for water and sewer. Because they're geared like to the improvement of infrastructure. The city of Moncton in their policy, they will not get, go over 30% of debt for their debt profile for water and sewer. But as of today, with all the loans we have and the one we should forecasting this year, these are the rates like we're leaning to. I think like, I'm hoping you realize that we have to address the situation long term. And we have to find ways to control our debt, to have a good asset management. So, we can renew them, but we also need to maximize like the partners who help us finance those debts. I would say over the last couple of years that the majority of the projects were funded, financed mostly by the water. And we did not get a lot of funders. There may be government partners who could help us to develop, to develop those infrastructures. So, it's our duty to be more aggressive and we will be more aggressive, trying to get different partners to help us. With all the needs we have, with an infrastructure that is aging and also with a new infrastructures in the regions. This is a very urgent needs I want to address. And I already had some discussion with the different directors. So, we have to go see the federal and provincial governments, the FCM. Anyone can become a partner and we need to take that chance. Because if we do not do it, I can guarantee someone else will do. And we are the biggest losers because we're just getting more into depth. I just wanted to give you like a picture of this. Then we will do the, go to the operation budget. So, we see the same like it's increasing. Right now with the existing project, we already approved last year. And last year, the debt rate increased to 8.3%. And we will probably submit other requests like for the budgets, for capital budgets. So, these amount will increase the amounts that we're showing you. So, we're getting close to the 20%. And again, we have to look if we can have possible partners to help fund the different project. I do not want to paint like a doom and gloom picture, but we have to address the situation. And the council really have to, has to look into the infrastructure we want, the service we want to deliver. Is it a want or a need? We have also like to look at the needs with the economic growth, with the development happen over the last few years. We were able to have a greater flexibility in our expenses because we had an increase in our tax base. But we have to deliver services, we still have to update the infrastructures we have. Like the underground infrastructures or buildings. Right now, if you're asking, can we accept like 100 million dollar project? I would say not without any aggressive partners who can, were able to help us in the project like this. Not ringing the alarm, but we have to address this situation long term. I would say maybe you can go back to, I just have another comment. I got a lot of discussion with the city of Moncton and also like they saw like some growth over the last decade. And we're trying to look at as modeling how they manage this role, how they were able like to. To manage that ratio. So, they all share us, they went over 20% at one time, but they need to have a very strict plan. And they have to follow that plan to ensure like the debt rate did not become like out of hand. But first they had to focus of the urgent needs of the municipalities and not only like projects. Like a political projects. We have to focus infrastructures where there is a need and we have to make some plans to develop those projects. The teaser, well, we assess three different options for the budget. There are three different options, we have options we assess, can change aside. So, there are three different scenarios. It was a status quo, an increase. To go to the real share level and also like a more aggressive adjustment to go to the real share rate. So, what we will be proposing in the budget process? We are proposing a reduction for 1 cent and a half for the former town of Chediak and the taxation rate and increase. 5 cents for the former LSDs to get to, to the share services. And if we're talking about a ratio of 1.5. Which is a ratio that is during the reform or before the reform. So, the non-residential ratios, so the province of New Brunswick reduce the rate in order to allow the municipalities to get this additional revenue. So, during, in the reform, we did not get those revenues. And of course, it has an impact on non-residential rate. Right now, by default is 1.5, we can go up to 1.7, but we can get 1.5. So, prior to the reform, it did not exist, 1 point, the difference of 1 point, 1.6. It's about 210,000. And then it's about 150,000 dollars more. So, the tax like the non-residential property. We have to continue investing like in our installations. And we need to adopt practices that will focus on our future needs according to our financial capacity. And we present a water rate that will not remain unchanged at 331 dollars. A couple of things I would like to discuss, items to consider. So, when we will be presenting the budget, so the RCM period, we did not get it yet. Right now, we did an estimate based on that. And what the province is asking us to do would be a 4% increase. So, waste, garbage collection, it changed like with the new contract we have with the regional service commission and it goes 360. With the regional collection and we have additional revenues coming in, even if it seems like the bill increase. We had some revenues that will offset this bill based on the new ERP program with circular materials. We are sharing also like unsightly and dangerous premises. So, we submitted the bylaw at the last meeting. So, there is a percentage of the salary. For the bylaw officer and there is a percentage that will be shared, but not the totality of the salary. To process the files for unsightly and dangerous premises and animal control. But animal control, we will present to a bylaw. It shouldn't be a major change in terms of the bill, but we will deliver the services differently. We all, we did not get like the, the cost of the assessment, the cost charged by the province. We did not get this, these amounts. So, if we'll have an impact on the budget, we estimated like an increase, but it could change like. And you're mentioning also residential rate. So, we'll be able to maintain like that rate to 1.5. So, we'd like for the council to look in the future to increase. Progressively like to get to that same level before the reform, what the citizen was paid or taxed like government wise. So, we will look what the provincial government, what we are recommending like for the provincial government. So, you're good? Question, any questions? There was the details, so we will get to the details. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thanks for the information. If we want to, on slide 5, so the debt profile. So, it would be good maybe like for us to see the numbers, what 21.6%? We will present them more in detail. Will you present, let's say like if we get this information before, maybe we wouldn't have the question, the question I'm asking now. So, what you will present us later? Are you telling us the raise on debt of 21 to 42 or? And I assume the same for operations. We have separate slides in your packages that are discussing like the debt profile. So, to dive more into details, all the documents I will be mentioning, they're all on Escribes. And of course, I presented you an agenda, like my presentation is there. So, it would be the third document we will discuss. It's included in your package, it's called, these are the amounts like for all the tax base of all the municipalities. So, if you want to see like a comparison of what the other, the increase, the other municipalities, what type of transfer payments they have? What type of adjustments you can do and what type of additional revenue like it can generate in term of. In term of additional revenue like you can charge. If we look, let's say at this one, a trend that we see like since the reform. It's the coagulant equalization, the equalization, the Pimmer is more and more like coherent, it's decreasing. During the reform with from a promise, like the funding would maintain for five year periods. And there would be a reduction, an annual reduction in this funding method. But from last year to this year, it's 30,000 dollars less we are getting. And I can tell you, as a municipality, we are fortunate that we do not get an equalization grant. Because it's an amount that I said that could be removed at any time or could be subject to the provincial government. Like they can choose the challenge and you become dependent. With the town of Chediak, we receive an amount, a minimal amount of transfer payment. But if we compare it to other municipalities such as Moncton, St. John, they receive like an amount that is considerable amount. So, in total, like this column represent maybe 75 millions of investment from the provincial government to, for those two. Those two columns, the co-grant and equalization. And it was formerly like the, it was, so we see a numbers by the service commission for the services to deliver. Before it was only from, only the municipalities. Any questions? So, the core rent, I have to add like 71,400. So, it will, it will be reduced to zero, it would take five years to do so. So, for year one was in 2023, 2024, this is the third year. Two other years and it will become zero. And then the town, the town of Chediak will get no core, no core grant for the province of New Brunswick. Only funding we'll have will be for specific projects. So, we have a project, we make an investment, other municipalities, it's come, it's almost the opposite, like the corporate will be reduced. It's completely transferred to the regional service commission, but apart for the transfer payment. We have 71,000, Mira Michi gets 5.8 millions in 2025. Our tax base is bigger than Mira Michi, just saying. So, the formula to calculate these things, it's a mad, it's a magical formula. I cannot understand, nobody was able to explain it to us. It's not a dark, I'm hoping it's not a dark wood somewhere, but. So, this is what we're living with and this is what we'll have. And something that was decided by the municipal reform. If the new government decide to go to a directorate, it will impact us as much as other municipalities. So, it's one of the things we would like to discuss during like the fiscal reform that will essentially come by the end of 2025. Councilor Roland Comier, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going the same place you were going. I'll use the example of Inmanstan, which is at 1.8 billion. So, we're getting like a 70,000 dollars and then Inmanstan 5.6 million, which is. It's like 30% of the budget or more in municipal career. I asked a question many times, like how come this, how this amount would be calculated? And I've been working the field for 11 years and nobody was able to answer my question. If you know anyone, well, who knows the answer? Yeah, it's more new secret than nuclear code. So, it might, maybe something we should ask from our two MLAs to see what, what they gave the answer. We like the people to represent us, but I think as municipal council or citizen, it shouldn't be like a secret, but it's not okay.
Obviously, the reform group together amalgamated things, but the tax reform was not finished. The former government made the choice of pushing it back. They had set a date, but for some reason or other, they changed. The today's government and its platform mentioned that it wanted to cover that question. It's obviously a file that is part of the discussion with the associations that represent us. It's put forward in the discussions with the various groups over the next few months. We need to find solutions, municipalities are asking for this in terms of financing different projects. Obviously, this is going to be a file that will be discussed around the table during the tax reform discussion for municipalities. If there's an indication, any indication from this new government that, well, they've named Aaron Kennedy, a former CAO. Well, he was the CAO of the town of Quispamssis. As a minister, a minister, as minister for local governments and also for service New Brunswick. His job is tax reform and reform of property assessments, the assessments for taxes, for property taxes. He needs to find a system, it'll come from him and from his staff, but that's his mission, it's his mandate. So, we see that the new government wants to cover not only tax reform and also reform of property tax assessment. For many reasons, it's a bit.
If the new government decide to go to a, the direction, it will impact us as, as much as other municipalities. So it's one of the things we would like to discuss during like the fiscal reform that will essentially come by the end of twenty twenty five. Councilor Roland Cormier, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going the same place you were going. I, I'll use the example of Inmanstan, which is at one point eight billion. So we're getting like a seventy thousand dollars. And then Inmanstan, five point six million. Okay, which is. It's like thirty percent of the budget or more. In my municipal career, I asked a question many times like, how come this, how this amount would be calculated? And I've been working the field for eleven years and nobody was able to answer my question. If you know anyone, well, who knows the answer? Yeah, it's more new secret than nuclear code. So it might, maybe it's something we should ask from our two MLAs to see what, what they gave the answer. We like the people to represent us, but I think as municipal council or citizen, it shouldn't be like a secret, but it's not okay.
Obviously, the reform grouped together and amalgamated things, but the tax reform was not finished. The former government made the choice of pushing it back. They had set a date, but for some reason or another, they changed. The today's government and its platform mentioned that it wanted to cover that question. It's obviously a file that is part of the discussion with the associations that represent us. It's put forward in the discussions with the various groups over the next few months. We need to find solutions. Municipalities are asking for this in terms of financing different projects. Obviously, this is going to be a file that will be discussed around the table during the tax reform discussion for municipalities. If there's an indication, any indication from this new government that, well, they've named Aaron Kennedy, a former C A O. Well, he was a C A O of the town of Quispemsis. As a minister, a minister, as minister for local governments and also for Service New Brunswick. His job is tax reform and reform of property assessments. The assessments for taxes, for, for property taxes. He needs to find a system. It'll come from him and from his staff. But that's his mission for, it's his mandate. So we see that the new government wants to cover not only tax reform and also reform of property tax assessment. For many reasons, it's a bit inconsistent with, with the moment of that we were seeing. And what I see, that's inconsistent for us. And I've said it many times, I won't do it, say the third time or an eighth time. So next, the next doc, number four that you have. We're going back a bit. We're presenting, we have a tax base of one point nine billion. When we present a budget, there are different classifications for properties and those amounts come from different parts in the municipality. This is a document that comes from the budget tool that was prepared by the province for us. It's a useful tool. As we put in all those figures manually, when you put in the expenses, if it's a shared expense or a local expense, it helps us to calculate the tax rate, exactly, the exact tax rate for, that we have in the municipality, for all the different sections. We have different tax authorities in the municipalities, in the municipality. And the first four come from the former municipality. The first one is the town of Chediak. The three next ones are parts that were annexed into the town of Chediak. In Skudok, the highway zone, areas that are much more non-residential. We see that it's a tax base that's very small, about thirteen point six million out of a total of one point nine billion. There's not much tax base in those three tax authorities there. The next one is Pointe du Chêne. The amount there is near, nearly two hundred ninety million in terms of its tax base value. And the last one is a combining of Skudok, Skudok Road, Chediak Cape. And that was combined in one tax authority. That represents about four hundred million dollars in terms of a tax base. Industrial Park, I believe, is within that four hundred million eventually. If we end up signing the agreement to buy for the park, we'll have to, there'll be separate amount that would take a bit from that zone. But the industrial park would have its own tax authority. Are there any questions on those amounts? So basically, once it's done, one additional column, yes, one additional column. The chart can add up to ten or so columns that can help to establish a different rates. The next one is number five. It's the summary. We put in all the figures. I'm kind of teasing where we are here, but it's where we have to get to mainly. Right now, when we look at this in the summary up top, we look at the expenses. There's all of the various departments as well as where they're accounted for based on their share. If it's a shared service, it's equalized based on the tax base. If it's a local service, it's only in the column where that service is found. Like for example, in the tax authority for Pointe du Chêne, there's streetlights that are only paid for those citizens. It's an addition that is only added in that column. There's a community center that receives annual grant for its operations that amount only comes from, it only figures in that column. There's also the various shared costs within the budget. In total, we will present a budget that's about twenty five point three million. That will be, will be shared in greater detail. I just want to focus on the second page. Well, maybe let's stay there for a bit, the rates on the bottom. You see on the last column, rate for shared services, internal, internal rate of sixty three and fifty seven cents. This says that according to the operating budget today, that the equal share of everyone for shared services should be sixty three fifty, sixty three and fifty cents. Doesn't include roads, economic development, doesn't include all those different facets. It's only on shared services that the municipality has. Recreation, admin, cost, council costs, all the different shared services. And the existing rate should be around sixty three point five cents. On the second page, we present where we should be based on the existing rates. So the town of Chediak last year had a rate of one dollar and forty four cents. Next three are the three regions I spoke to you about just earlier. There were thirty point five million. Those rates will not be changed. They will remain the same up until the moment where we're at the level that we need to be at sixty three cents. And the Pointe du Chêne borough and Skudok, Skudok Road and Chediak Cape represent a total of forty five eighty one. To get to that level, you'll, you see one of the columns there, the third one from the bottom, change with respect to the current year, sorry.
The tool only came in either English or French and we did it in French. But if you look at the third row, the third row is the difference of where the shared rate would be based on where today's rate is. So to get to where we need to be, the roadmap down the road, it'll take us a number of years to get there. Chediak would still need to reduce their rate to pay their even share. Right now, they're subsidizing other areas around close to ten cents. The other three would remain unchanged. Pointe du Chêne and Skudok would need to raise around twenty cents with the maximum that is allowable as per reform.
The maximum allowed during the reform of five cents, it will take us about four to five additional years to get there. So when I shared a bit about the recommendation of staff, the recommendation staff is to start to reduce the Chediak rate to get closer to that ten cent level, but while increasing the rate for the different LSDs to fill the gap that exists. And now further in the document, you'll see that there's the provincial rate, the special provincial rate that pays for the roads. The four first don't pay that rate because that they're part, it's part of the second column, it's local services, the local services. That the residents at town should actually be paying sixty three cents and seventy one cents addition, in addition for the maintenance of roads, economic development and non-shared services. And this, not services are not shared with the different tax authorities. But the lax column of the first chart, you take a bear apples to apples, it's the rate where the residents should be, at what level if we include all of the provisions that include the roads, recreation, staff, et cetera. I would, I foresee I'm going to have a lot of questions around that table. I'm not sure if you've already been to that table, but as part of the reform, you should have been at some point presented where we are, where we need to go and how long it will take to get there. I'm just telling you today, based on the budget analysis in terms of shared services, we have to get to that level and we need to see, have an adjustment over several years to get there. Thank you. Councilor Boudreau, I will tell you, if you say that we should have been presented, that have that presented to us, I was myself, Councilor Boudreau, Councilor Cormier, who were on the transition committee at the time, we did not get there, not to that point. They were not able to get us those figures. I don't know if the tool existed. It's clear that's the first time it's been used. When I spoke to the finance director, that she hadn't seen that a month ago. That's two finance directors ago and two C A Os ago. It's important for me to present this because I think that when we look at where we have to get to in terms of the reform project, was it supposed to happen? I think it's a really important document that you should have in your hands. You must, you have to see the idea of where we had to get to and the decision we need to make in terms of the budget. Thank you, it's great. And it was one of the things that we had discussed when we presented the reform with the whole team, Mr. Clerk, your predecessor. As we say in English, the fair share, the shared. It had not yet been determined yet, but now we see it. So this brings some clarity. Councilor Paul Boudreau, thank you. And I like this point of view to for long-term planning. I'm not sure if it's a question or if you refer to the capital projects. I know we're going to be talking about this in a bit. From what I can see in all of these columns, the only capital projects that we have until twenty thirty is those of this year. And, and there's only six items this year as are foreseen. There's some nice items there. What happened to this document that the councillor had, this five-year plan? We could plan over the current year and we always said it's a five-year plan for ten years. So why does this no longer exist? Why don't we have that document? If you see the items set up, foreseen for twenty twenty five, there's for sure more. Well, many, many other projects are coming. How do you do long-term planning, Eve, without seeing the capital projects for over the next five, six years? Councilor Boudreau, are we talking about another document in the, in the file or this one? Is the document right there? From what I can understand, maybe I mixed up here. Are you seeing revenue and expenses to operate the town? This, from what I can see, there's only twenty capital projects for twenty twenty five. It's in the next document and one of the next documents that we will be seeing, the capital project that we will be presenting for lending. Indeed, that document does exist. We're not saying it doesn't exist. Ma, ma. But it needs to be updated. It needs a better analysis than before. When we talk about the supplemental additional role that we want to add, we have existing needs that we're not analyzing, well, really, in this document. It's more the future needs. So the management of assets is probably one of the documents and the methodologies that is the most important for us as municipality to proper plan, to properly manage where we're heading. Right now, there's a consultant that's helping us to update our asset management plan. The asset management plan will help guide us, help direct us towards a direction that will focus on our needs and the wants, not the needs, the needs, not the wants. And we need to update that. And I'm not ready to present that to you. It's not updated yet. We haven't had time to present that. I know, I would like for more information on the capital projects. All right, we have to, we need to tell the citizens, well, when the street is not done by twenty twenty five. We're talking about Le Ban Street, for example. Will it be done in twenty twenty eight, twenty thirty two, twenty forty two? I don't know. And the infrastructure that will lead to additional costs for labor. We have to know that and we have to prepare things in advance. So to plan capital projects for one year, I don't find it wise. It's not even a good short-term vision for us as elected officials. We'll go around the table, remember the five-year plan, we modify it. And it came out again, you can modify it and prepare our operations and our lending. Will it be in this as part of the exercise? Am I jumping the gun? You're not jumping the gun. I can tell you that we're looking to have a pause on many things to better analyze them. And that's where the asset management plan will come in. If we only focus on a list of things that we think or may not be focusing on the right real needs. I assure you that list, it was what the citizens wanted. If we say we're going to put things on pause with budgets up to twenty five million dollars with a pause, I don't agree that that's the word we should use. I'd rather have use the word long-term planning. That's my worry. I think it's just that we need to do a revision to plan it for in the long term. Lots of the things on that list, they accomplished them last year and some of them were accomplishing this year and that's great. That lovely street is already, is now open. That has been on our list for several years. So now, there's a few more items that we will do. We were doing part of it this year and another part of it next year, et cetera. But there are certain other things. Well, is the need there now? Like for, for item one or item eight, is it in three years? Is it in eight years? In terms of looking at the options, is it something we need to do exactly the same way? That's not my point. It's just that the asset management will help. That is my, that was my point. That document could, the town hall is coming in twenty twenty eight, twenty twenty eight. Well, the item two million, twenty million? Listen, I can tell you that since my arrival, one thing that is missing is strategic planning in terms of where we have to focus our efforts. That document does not exist right now. That document is supposed to provide direction to the municipality in terms of where we're going, what types of services we want to deliver. If we, once we have that document, now then we'll have to look and see where we'll have to invest in terms of that strategic vision. If you want a document, I can make one, but it will not be something that will focus on the priority lines. So when will the elected officials provide their input to such a document? Bring your microphone a little closer. During the strategic planning, we've asked the consultant from here to the end of the year, by the end of the year, to present the strategic plan to the municipality. Thank you. Councilor Ronald Cormier, any questions so far? Yes, thank you, worship. I want to better understand the slide that you presented to us. Well, first, first or second page, the one right there. The tax rate, one point four four eight four in Chediak. And we're proposing one point three five, not this year. This is a document that is telling you what is the real shared portion that should be in the budget. So for Chediak, the seventy nine is who? That is Chediak Parish. It's not explained, that's why. It's not me that doesn't see, it's not there. Okay, thank you. The columns are in the same order as the first page. You have it, but we don't have it. I have just, I've just noticed that. So I'll try to figure this out after. So the shared service rate according to you is sixty three point five eight? Exactly, yes, today, yes, according to you. And I would presume that you will demonstrate where you have found that figure of sixty three. You say, you were saying that it's shared services according to you, yes? And I would presume that you'll show us that that's the case in somewhere in the budget? Because we could maybe have some discussions. Your definition of shared services and my definition of shared services might not be the same and maybe, I don't know, because I have not seen. So I presume you're going to show us that at some point as part of the budget process? Because we would presume that's what it is. I'm not saying it's not it. But I need to be convinced, presently, shared services are all the municipal services except for the streets, roads, economic development and a share of some employees. The bylaw officer, animal control, R C M P, garbage collection was not a shared service before, it was local service because there were two different contracts. Those, that's most of it. The rest of it are all local services. And once again, I would presume that you will show us that. I know you've said it verbally, I would like to see it. I have other questions. Maybe before the end of our budget deliberations, we could make a sort of. we could make a sort of, sort of a list. I'm not saying that you're not wrong, that you're not right. It would help to have it written down. I think that's what I'm saying. And if I continue, we see the percentages. Ah, now I better understand the document. It's the items on top. Okay. Thank you, Your Worship. The first column is Chediac. The three next one are the former amalgamations that were already part of the town, Point du Chen and Scudux, Scudux Road, and Chediac Cape. And the last column. The reason that he grouped those three LSDs, the taxation rates are very similar with the reform. They decided to make one tax rate for those three regions. The difference is really, really minimal. Councilor Patricia Broch, Chevadi, thank you, Your Worship. Your 0.63 is not a math form? It's not a math formula in your summary? It's a mathematical formula, yes? And the figures in your summary on the first page? No. Well, yes, in part. It takes into account the tax base, but it's linked to the budget that we'll be presenting later. Let's say that we decide to close the arena and it costs 1 million for the arena. It will have an impact throughout the budget. That rate will reduce in proportion based on the million. Yeah, that's great. Thank you. There was only two questions, Mr. CAO. So, I would just like, we just wanted to paint that picture for you. Now, I'm, it's, I'm going to pass the mic to the finance director, who will go into further detail. We will start with the section O. He will start with the debt ratio and the expenses and the expense for the proposed project. And she will present the operational budget for water afterwards. So I will start. Can we put this slide up? I'm looking for it. It's number six. So we're going to start by debt. It's the sixth one. There's a screen as well. Go ahead, Madame. We can, we see the different columns, the different years. With the budget that we had for 2024, 2024 column, it was already established. And based on the 2025 budget that we want to propose and the following years, we wanted to show you the debt ratio is higher than years before, the more that the rate increases. The user fee rate, we mentioned before, it's 331 dollars. We're keeping the same amount in terms of the revenue. We see that it's revenue that we receive according to the rate set. And next, there's 25,000 dollars. That's the transfer for water for the firefighters. And in terms of connection fees and all of the services that we provide, it's revenues of 25,000, interest revenues. There are surpluses from previous years, and that gives us a total revenue. And then there's the various expenses that come into it. There are many of them. Did you want to go through it in a summary kind of way and then answer some questions after? I'd like that better. I'd prefer that. And next, in terms of expenses, there's debt servicing fees. Debt servicing fees are mostly what we have to pay. It's actually in further detail for the debt. And that next operating and maintenance fees is an increase. I'm putting in an increase of 2%. The percentage of increase per year are the percentages on top to the right of the document. And then we have capital budget. And after that, just some, there are some small discounts and the deficits of previous years. If I go a bit lower, and we also see that the surpluses and deficits, it becomes a balanced budget. And then we establish the debt profile. Just below the debt profile, it's all of the various long-term loans and debentures that we have with the lending commission. And I put some details in there, and I put in the lending, the borrowing, rather, that has already been done until 2024. It's borrowed from the lending commission. And 2025 is based on the capital projects that we will be submitting. And I added 2027, 28, 29 to be able to have an estimate of the amount to establish the debt ratio. So we can agree that if we have some lending in 2024, it will start to affect us in 2025. We start to pay the long-term debt the following year for that debenture. So to try to avoid, prevent an increase to our debt ratio. If we can do a bit of pay-as-you-go, we reduce our long-term loan, so our debt ratio will eventually go down. So now I can take your questions, if you have any questions. Councilor Janice Cormier, thank you, Your Worship. So we can see the debt ratio that doubles, that is doubling as we go. Is this, will someone staff or will someone bring us some recommendations, some solutions? Things that we can do differently with our water budget to bring down that rate? It's going up very hot, quickly? Or is it something that we, how do we go forward? I know there was one year, a few years ago, where we talked about putting in meters in certain places. Is something that staff can bring in terms of suggestion? Things that we can do if we do that, that will relate, it will bring, slow the debt ratio increase? Right now, if I could answer the question, and it's related to Councilor Budro's question, we're heading into a plan that we developed, but within that, the plan did not take into account the new streets, the new additions, the new sections that were added.
We're talking about the school that might be added along the way. So it's not, it's not shown in the budget. What type of road do we need? Would it be just like, maybe like a long driveway for the school? Or do we want to plan long-term, but we want to build the street so we can have access to develop? It will, it will mean investment for the municipality. So we're talking to have like a long-term planification, and we are not there. So we exploded, like we grew so much. It put us in a position like maybe we're not as ready like to answer those questions. And it's one dynamic. Five years ago, well, only one person like from the management that was part of the organization. So I would say, three years ago, it was only one person from this organization. So when we bring this dynamic, we are where we are, like for different reasons, but it contributed to this. So we have to look at long-term planning that will really focus and identify the needs. I think like the economic development, the director is aware of what will happen. We need to have a share between there and public works. So this, this link is being made. There's another link for legislation, because if there's a possible development, a rezoning request, like a variance rezoning is involved there too. So we're adding like community life, like a community life. Well, it's another link. What type of infrastructure do we have to build to support this? And it also, it has to be supported by finance. So we have to sing the same voice, so we have to be more coordinated. I know that our team's doing some coordination, but we're not where we should be, that because of the many, many reasons that I mentioned. Mrs. Director, like for the loans. Yeah, the Bobrow region sector, so it will have like a, it will have a more significant impact. Bobrow Bridge is a street. So we're aligned, so how will it impact? Except there will be more like water that will circulate. Is there a part of it? So the trunks are aligned, that's where we will build them, like. So it will impact also like the waterfront. It will not affect the fund generally. It's a utility, like. So that's, that's where it will show instead of and somewhere around, because the trunks are aligned will be, it will be so that's what we would be charging. So waiting like the water fee for 331, so there won't be any user, but there's no. It's to allow like the, it should pay like our 2 millions out of the 12 million. Exactly, like that's the point I wanted to make. We should not forget the 12 million dollar project, like will be like 80%. 10 million will be covered, the rest is. We are working. They will, we will need to have like a long-term loan, like to cover the rest. But for a mechanism for, to recuperate some funds, well, it's not really something like we establish like the 100%. To answer your question. Councilor Michael Royd.
I think there was a reference made to the potential for development fees, development charges. If I'm not mistaken, as a source of revenue for the utility. Maybe I misunderstood. The translation is not great.
Okay. We didn't discuss it.
No, but I thought.
I'm not aware of the file too much to be able to speak on it. But I, it is a model that can be used to help fund projects like these. Another medium, obviously, the major funding partner for that project is, is obviously another partner. It's not completely funded by the municipality. I think as soon as council adopts a budget and a roadmap on where we're going to go next year, the very next day, we need to start knocking on doors with our funding partners and being in front of them and explaining them our projects. But we also need to build that list long-term where we can knock on projects that we need in another two years, three years, four years, five years. So it's not a surprise when we go knocking on their door every year. This is our project, this is, so we need to do some work long-term to kind of plan that. But obviously, with the current projects, we need to go knocking on some doors as well.
But in terms of, you have a kind of a flat line on your revenue and the water utility at 331? That's projected until 2030? That seems kind of odd to me. And the other thing is the reference to meters. It's in this day and age, to have a use of water at a low rate like that, that's un-metered. It doesn't seem to jive with today's, you know, environmental concepts and user pay fees and so on. I'm curious as to what our wash facilities would be charged. Are they metered?
No.
So they pay?
Charged a higher number of units. Obviously, a business case would have to be made as to the initial investment that would require to change to a meter system and the cost that would, the company would bear. At this point, I'm not aware that that's on our radar, and I'm not sure if that was ever discussed. Maybe one of our directors knows that question.
I can add to that. So one of the first things that we did once I was, started in this position was to implement changes to the water bylaw. And one of those was to allow the installation of meters to be considered. It's basically at the administration's, at the public works department's discretion, which types of installations warrant it. And since then, on any larger commercial installations, we have pushed, we have advised meter installations to be the case, and we have a rate determined. It's, yeah, it's, it is, the rate is established, so that's how we do billing. There are a number of installs around town with meters. There were a few at that point already, a couple of, maybe two or three. But now that number is quickly growing. But at the moment, it's, it's, it's commercial. It's anything larger than a house or a duplex or such.
And can I ask the reason that there would not be projected any increase in user fees over the next six, seven years for the residential water usage?
I would answer, we don't have an answer to that one.
It seems quite strange to me, especially when your, when your, when your debt ratio is increasing and you're, and you're struggling to try and figure out what you might do to, you know, it might be the user.
Question in terms of the user ratio is going up, but we, yet we're keeping our revenues at the same amount.
Yeah, the user fee isn't going to be the biggest contributor there, but at least it should, it should reflect some reality in terms of increasing costs of operation.
There's new users being added to the system.
Oh, yeah, there are, but still.
So we've been able to kind of manage that growth with, with the budget. Obviously, with the debt ratio that we're presenting, maybe that needs to be looked at in future budgets.
Just.
We haven't approved this budget yet, so maybe it could be looked at for this one.
Well, in this budget, this will be, the debt ratio goes up to 22.31.
I was talking about rethinking, rethinking the maintaining the.
Yeah.
And again, council has the authority to modify that rate this year. The extra revenue that that would generate could be, could be transferred to reserves for future projects. And you could fund projects in the future with reserves as well. Thank you. Bob, you had something to respond? We've got others?
I could make another comment with, when I, we make a little study for the water cost and the water charge, the cost that we charge for the, every single house, it's higher than the other municipality that we make the study and they are. We have five, we compare our fees with five other municipalities, and our fees are higher. So a lot of people ask us to decrease the rate. Because our rate is what is higher than the other municipality.
And obviously, and I'm just looking at the director of economic development. He sees that as a, as a carrot that he can go to sell potential development projects as to the attraction of, you know, the rates in Chediac and why it's more appealing to build in our market. Obviously, you don't want to price yourself out, because developers do look at their pennies and cents, and that comes into consideration when they decide to move forward with a certain project.
Thank you for the question. Councilor Ronald Cormier.
Thank you, Monsieur. First comment. Oh, switch to English.
331 is probably not sufficient for, for the amount of, amount of dollars that we need to operate the system.
I can understand that the other municipalities charge less for their water fees, but I'm not denying it. If you tell me. If you tell me, if you tell me, I believe you. But the reality is that we have a debt ratio of twenty two percent that will increase forty four percent. If we stay there, we're not responsible for our actions to, to have like a deficit like that. The question, question I would have, if I understand well, right now we have five thousand eight hundred and forty eight users and we are predicting we will have six thousand six hundred. So the apartment buildings, if they have seventy, seventy five units, is it seventy five users? That's how it works. So the borrowing cost, so we're, we're saying like four hundred and nine, and ninety two is a thousand? Or under two point one seventy five is it millions? Two point seven million, so would I be okay like if I say that, okay? And the, and the twenty seven, thirty, these are estimations. So we have no idea what it is, so we're giving estimates. So these are estimates of the projects we have, our current projects and the one we are proposing for next year. For, to do it like next year for twenty thirty, I don't think it's worth. But the payment is spread over a few years. So a project, I'll use it as an example, like the, the first active debenture, twenty twenty two, five percent fifteen years. From twenty twenty two, for the next fifteen years until twenty thirty seven, this forty six thousand dollars will appear on, on the budget for the next fifteen years. So that's why those amounts are still there. So we, we could have showed like until it goes, it gets to zero, but we only showed it like for the next five years. But the debenture costs like for twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine, twenty three, these are the real costs and not the, not, and not, and not, it's not, these are existing projects, no new projects or additions we did last year and we are proposing this year. Mister Mayor, with the debt ratio, we have to look at, the administration has to go, to go back to the, to the table and to, to modify like the, the user fees because I'm not ready to accept like recommendations like this because it's not responsible for, on our behalf. Thank you, Councilor Cormier. Quick question, Mrs. Director, Bowbridge East Extension, Phase Two. So this is to bring it from the Bellview Street to Ohio Road. We did not adopt anything. No bylaws or something, but that's where the, 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 the neighboring lands like on the street, then we'll be able to recuperate one, this land is developed to pay like the capital we invested. So it's on those possible front, front to three development charges. So it's the same type of concept, it's that recuperating, but different calculations. So like what, what is planned like for twenty twenty five? We could reimburse like the, the loan for, for water and also the general fund at the same time with development. It's a long term investment. Since it has an impact on the rate on the significant, but the, the, the rate could improve, could improve like quite quickly with the new development. As I mentioned earlier, like if we do part, part pay as we go. So when the trunks were aligned, so the amount that's written there, if we go back like to, when we see the capital project, but this project is, it's higher, the cost is higher than this one. I think the total of the project, I do not have the exact number for the total. It's a twelve million schedule, but we'll go like to capital borrowing board. We're supposed to go to the borrowing board for three point one mil, millions. I reduce it to one, two point one seventy five because I put, because I put like an amount is like pay as you go to reduce, like not, not to cap, like always cap our debt ratio. I'm following you. Councilor Patricia Bookchavari, so thank you. So maybe like our CEO answered my question, but I will ask my question to Carol. Since you talk. Yeah, hoping it's not the same answer. I was looking at the table, like the fifteen year, like for the first one, OM twenty two zero zero five. So it means it's only in twenty thirty seven we will start to eliminate loans we have. So it means like the column for twenty twenty six up to twenty thirty seven will not be reduced. Like the amounts will always stay there. So it means we have no way like to, to reduce our debt ratio. The only time, like for water, we do not have it, but, but in the debt profile, like general fund, of general operating fund, if we have a, if we had a debenture to review, to renew, if we do not want to renew it, well, it will, it will not reappear, but we still have to pay like the balance. But for the, for water, well, it goes up to twenty thirty seven like the column. So it's, so this column will remain there. So for the trunks sewer line, so this one, I know like the amount it will only go through like the water, water fund. But for the next project, for Bowbridge, Bowbridge East Extension, so there must be an amount like that, that will be the budget because it's not, not only the water. So the amount you see there is really the amount for, for the project. It's strictly like the, 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 the water and sewer part. Asphalt would be under the operation budget for Bowbridge. But the trunks were aligned, there's nothing else like that. That's good, thank you. Councilor Peter Burrow, thank you. So I have, so I have a concern on the, on the percentage of the debt like for users who are not paying their bills. We know there's a big amount like of users who are not paying. I think we were even like charging interest on top of the interest. So I don't know where this file is at, but in, in the planning here, like it's assuming everyone pays. And we know it's not their case. It's the people who pays, I guess. So when we bill, when we invoice the citizen. So the revenue is registered, but, but if the revenue never comes in, so your debt ratio, we will have to erase those amounts and it will increase our tax rate because, because I know we discussed it last year and, and we, we talked about many of those that will never be collected. It's always in our payable, receivable account, so it increases our debt ratio. And I think time will come, the auditor will force us to erase those amounts until it will increase our debt ratio. Yes, of course, if we cancel our revenue, it will increase our debt. So this file, so is it, is it on the operation budget, operating budget? No, it's only like in the water budget. Mister CEO, I don't know if you're aware, like, so there are many debts, like these are bad unpaid debt and over several years. And I don't know when the auditor is like, will, will say, well, it's not revenue like. It should be considered because if ever like the, the auditor is asked us to remove this debt that will never be collected, while our debt, debt rate will increase substantially. I would, I probably would never eliminate like that debt. Because we have some recourse, like to recuperate those amounts. When there's a, when, when there's a, when some purchase or when somebody sells, let's say someone buy, purchase a land in the water millas and pay, pay like during, in the transaction, it shows this amount is due because this bill is against a property, does not follow the owner. It stays on the property. Let's say you buy a house and the bad debt of five thousand dollars that wasn't paid by the previous owner or the existing owner, this debt will, will fall under, in your book. So there's some mechanism we can use to recuperate the, the, this money and we can even go up to the point to shut off the water on the property. Usually when the call comes in and they, they shut off the water, like usually the bill is paid more quickly. If we have to become more aggressive with the methods to use, I'm not aware of the situation, but some methods we can use to get the, to pay those debt. And, and if people don't pay, well, you just cut the service. This debt will exist until the, it's on the property, until the property is purchased or transferred, et cetera. It's, it's, it's not unusual that a property, now we'd have to check. I'm not sure if there's a mechanism with the province such as unsightly premises who can recuperate the, the amount to the taxation rate. But I haven't worked many, many years with, with a municipality who has a water into our system. I don't know if we have this mechanism. I know at the time like there was pressure to do it. It was similar, like if you didn't pay like for a nice cycling premises, we, we were able to recuperate this money with the taxes. So we have mechan, mechanism like for those bad debts. If we have to become more aggressive, depending on the situation and how we attack this file. So what you are saying, telling me, it will never be removed to, to the receive, to the receivable. It will always be a receivable. As the CEO mentioned, this amount will be recuperated. When, we don't know. And if we have to be, to become more aggressive, we'll have to do some research to see what are the methods like to become more aggressive to get our, that we could use. We will never eliminate water and sewer. We never limit it because we have a mechanism to recuperate it up to a point. Like if the property is being transferred, if it's given to someone else, if the bank repossess this property, the bank becomes responsible. And, and I can tell you when the properties are, are re, repossessed by the bank. So the bank comes in and paid the bill quite quickly because they want, they want to sell the property without any, with, with no, with no links. Councilor Bookchavari, in other like provision for losses, it where? Because I know like we had one case or two, we have an amount that would be there just in case. Because when a couple of cases, I, I better like forecast it, even if we don't use it, I'd rather set it aside. I would, just in case like we have to, to do it. So I was wondering if there was an amount there like that could be used in a case like this. So it's a case by case basis. The next one. Now we go for debt profile, like to operating budget. Um, and Mrs. Finance is a degree, so we are, we are in the water. Water fund. For the document, well, I, so we'll go, we'll go line by line here. It's not as long because I will explain like the lines where there are some gaps. Those where no gaps, well, it's the same thing. Like for water sales during, so we have a difference of thirty nine thousand dollars versus last year. So the gap, but twenty twenty four versus twenty twenty three. So it should be, it should be switched like the twenty twenty four versus twenty twenty five or. So the difference, well, there, we had, we budgeted like a hundred and seventeen increase, new units. The other line is the operation gain. So these are like the surplus from the previous years, two years ago, like we have to report it. So it's a total revenue of two point three million. And then for expenses, to the first two lines, this administration and public works, it's a percentage of their salaries that is strictly allocated to the water fund and it's a three percent increase like for a salary increase. Then we have, it goes like to the column, the section like pumping station where we have like the electricity. So I saw like, I put like a twelve percent increase. Thank you, thank you, NB Power. So, so I look. So NB Power, they're forecast for increases because there are different services such since it's a twelve percent, but for residential is eight percent. So, so that's why I relied on to, to, to establish like the required increases. As for the reservoir inspection, it's a specific expenses in twenty twenty five that we did not have in twenty twenty four. So we have to do the inspection of the two water towers. It has to be done in twenty twenty five. So where we have a difference? In the treatment plant, while the power increase is the same as I said, privacy. So it, it, insurance and property taxes, so that's a forecast increase. For the, for insurance property tax, it will increase anyway. As for the administration and others, for, for training and conference, so we increase the budget of five thousand dollars because we want, we, we want to, to encourage employees like to get their water certificate. So they need some type, some kind of certification and we want like to encourage employees to get their certification. So service charge and DT. So these are machines like, you know, for the, when we accept like debit or credit payments. So it's one of my projects in twenty twenty five, like to, to check if we, if we could have, offer a better service to reduce those fees. Water sample, well, so the expense will increase like the budget because there's a lot of work. Major works that are required such as on Main Street, Bow, Bowbridge. And it requires when we do work like that, we need like some water sampling, like it's a greater volume of sampling. By interim funding, so I increase a little bit the budget because with the projects we will have, like if we need like funding in advance, well, these are, these amounts like we, we have to pay some fees. So, so we eventually, we have to prevent that, if we need like to get some funding before. And then we have like a debt payment, interest and principal. I cannot explain what the difference is really the payments we will have to do. And then for, for the, for capital like Bowbridge Extension in twenty twenty five, like in twenty twenty four, we had projects.
We had the first phase of the Brobras Extension and Pofash de Chesly. Those are projects that are currently being finished and that will affect the twenty twenty four budgets, expenses in twenty twenty four. But for twenty twenty five, you see there is zero. I'm putting them out for the trunk sewer line that we would pay as you go instead of going to capital lending or capital borrowing. And for the economic development, it's the incentive that we had provided for the Alexi Roi project, for the Brobridge area. And then the savings on bonds, it's related to the discount we have on debentures. And then bad debts, we maintain the same thing each year. And well, the last difference is just to balance the budget because we always want to present a, a balanced budget, budget. So that's the operation as operations budget for water. Thank you, except for that, I think you have a few questions. Councilor Ronald Cormier, thank you, your worship. The first item, the two hundred and ninety two thousand dollars for administration. We, we said earlier that administration is part, is seen as. We, we said earlier that administration is part, is seen as a shared service, yes. But now we charge the users, the water users. I would presume that when we do the math on that one, that we take out the two hundred and ninety thousand from the shared service. It's not a shared service. Those employees are a local service, uh, only for the town of Chedjak, that's why I'm asking the question. And last year, I raised that. Last year, I had raised that I had some worries related to lending, uh, for water testing. We had been informed that we had that time, oh, sorry, the people had been trained, sorry, uh, that there was one and we were working on the second one, it was very important. I was one of the people that felt it was very important in terms of training the, the, these employees. Can you tell us today that we might have two employees who have been trained? At this point, we're working on two and we're working on a third. Well, bravo. Congratulations. I don't know who I need to thank, I'll thank both of you. Counselor Joel Depret, thank you, your worship. Bob, I have a question for you. The, you have to ask the question to me and then I direct them. Your wor- yes, your mister, your worship, I have a question for you. Uh, the person who comes to do the testing for the fire hydrants, he spends two weeks in the, in this, in the municipality. In which section was his responsibility? It's, uh, it falls in the line, it's on the clo- it's on the top of the document, unidirectional rinsing for twenty-six thousand? Uh, twenty-six thousand, is this something that one of our employees could do? I know that employee, he always has to stay with him while he's there, I'm just curious. Or does it require a special certification? There is a special, special, specialization in that, there's a way of doing it that minimizes disruption in the water system, in terms of mixing up the sediment in the system. This is one of the biggest reasons that we work with that company. They have a method of doing it and it avoids problems, prevents problems. That's all I have as information as you ask that question. I have a sense, we're not the only municipality that uses, that uses their services, right? Counselor Buduro, uh, I'll ask a question to, to Danny. There was only a hundred and seventeen new clients with all those apartments and this tax base, we're speaking of seventy million. We only have a hundred and seventy odd new clients. It's a lot, a hundred and seventeen. Ah, yes? That's this year, upcoming year, that's only, it's only two percent. That's in, uh, for the construction permits. It's a lot, though. We didn't have new apartment blocks built this year. Not large ones, if you look, there's twenty unit buildings, but not ninety-five unit buildings. That was in the budget for next, the previous year. And you see that there's an agreement made with that development, developer, rather. And I'll, I'll ask the question later on the other budget, in terms of the increases for electricity, twelve percent. Is that the rate that NB Power will, well, you might as well say it, well, twelve percent of increase, have you taken that into account, or is it the increase of, in terms of electricity consumption? No, I took, I, I brought out a document by NB Power that says that per, uh, different category, residences or personal or commercial, the rates are different. That's what I base myself on, to establish that increase. So, so we mentioning twelve percent, that's incredible. That's not, it's not, they don't, they don't give it away. That's included, your houses too. Counselor Patricia Bourgchavari, thank you, for the third and last time, no, it's a joke. Oh, well, okay, for economic development, thirty-five thousand, uh, project Alexierrois, is that the thirty-five thousand for hall, for his whole project, including the three apartment blocks, uh, this is over five years. Uh, so his project, the full project for the three apartment buildings? There was so much per apartment building, so it's thirty-five thousand per apartment building? So this year it's only one apartment building, yes? Yeah? It had been brought before the council already and there'd been a resolution that effect, well, yes. I don't have all the details in front of me, but I could bring them out for you, if my memory serves. So now he's on the second building. So next year, it will be seventy. And when we has the third, uh, there'll be another, there'll be an agreement. Uh, you're aware, yes, I'm aware, but I was just wondering the details. I wasn't, didn't recall it was for the three buildings or it's for the three buildings in total. But he has to build them to be able to put them in. That was not the pumping question, it was something else. It was the water lines. Okay, that's great, thank you. We're both looking to refresh our memory. Counselor Paul Buduro. No? Okay? Inaudible, uh, great. So it's eight thirty-eight. Uh, do we time for one more aspect? Inaudible. There was a discussion regarding change uh, in terms of financing, increasing the debt ratio, uh, improving the debt ratio. It'd be good to have some direction in terms of where you're headed with that, or some kind of consensus. Obviously, this is the budget that we're presenting, to be adopted if there are no modifications. We're looking for a consensus, if this is what you want to adopt, or if you want to make changes based on the concerns, if there is anything to change that we'd like to see in the final version. In terms of the water budget. Counselor Ronald Cormier. We won't start on the budget that we haven't seen yet. Uh, your worship, in terms of the water budget, the projections of not increasing, well, this is my opinion. The user rate, the annual rate that we pay, I don't think it's responsible on our part, seeing that the debt ratio eh, be twenty-three percent, it would be going to forty-six percent. We need to follow, uh, it's great, the development is great, but the, will develop, will be enough development to, or once again, reduce things back to a reasonable ratio. I think we need to increase it, um, do the math and see what it should be. If I can summarize, for twenty twenty-five, I have to put in front of my eyes, it's a twenty-two, twenty-three percent. So that's proposed for twenty twenty-five, that we're not adopting twenty-seven, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight tonight. You're coming forward with this budget, that we can maybe provide a direction, some directive to staff. Could you find means to try, uh, to bring it down as of twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight? Maybe give us some time to do it, that might be a means. It's a simple suggest, it's just a suggestion, Counselor Patricia Bourgchavari. Well, I agree with what you mentioned there. I find that getting, that the ratio is higher than, the rate is high, is already higher, that we, we're not investing in the water fund. I think that we should say where we are, uh, for, for this year. And that next year, we should consider, we could consider it more. If we do make investments in other projects, and find a way to try to reduce the impact that we can foresee. Thank you. Counselor Janice Cormier, thank you, your worship. I see Counselor Cormier's point of view, in terms of the debt ratio that is drastically increasing. And that we need to try to, we need to be transparent, rather. But I think I agree with Counselor Bourgchavari. We can't just increase, uh, the number to a number that will cost our citizens, because we see our debt ratio that's going higher or the doubling, we, we need to go deeper than that. I'd like to see staff start to look at solutions, options uh, that we could be discussed next year before the twenty twenty-six budget. When we do the twenty twenty-six budget, so we can do the necessary changes to attenuate the debt ratio. Just because the water debt ratio is increasing, we do see it, yes, it's doubling. We're not yet ready to make an increase, just because we see this increase. I think there need to be more study and some solutions that we brought to the table over the next year. So that we are more ready, we're, ready for next year in twenty twenty-six. It would give us a chance to develop a strategy. Counselor Jamin Galan. I agree with them, and I'll go even further. I don't want to charge my citizens for an increase, if for, if somebody's not paying. Saudi, if you're not paying the water, our citizens in Chedjak are paying. And three hundred and thirty-one dollars, it's, it's, it's high enough. I think that we'd better, we'd be better off staying where we're, we're at. Thank you, Counselor Jamin. Counselor Paul Buduro, your last. Just to be clear, the water budget is for, it includes infrastructure. So, uh, major infrastructure that we're thinking, yeah, if it's water related, water lines. The report that we had last week, at the, at the request of the citizens for Bonten, the water line, the point of shame, is it covered in this? Or if not, where, when would be covered? If we go forward, we need to find in which budget, so how to finance it, is it shared? I don't want to open another great big discussion now, but is it now, through this water budget? No, you're saying no? It's not even in the list, it's not in the list, right now. Are we adding it to the list? To answer your question, when? That's where we have to develop a plan. For everything, for the five-year plan, the priorities, where we want to focus our money. If we don't have any priorities, we're working on everything, fair enough. I think you see that with the financial picture that we're painting, we can't just be focused on everything, we have to set priorities. Specific priorities in terms of where we want to invest, in which region, for which project. My concern is that it comes up again in February, once the budget is adopted, or next week. Uh, we can say, no, we haven't even discussed the project of extending it. If you're telling me that it's coming up with a plan, I'm comfortable with that. I would tell you that what we're presenting this year is for this year and next year, next year being twenty twenty-five, existing projects. But we'll be presenting a plan, a total plan, a long-term plan, that will be focused not only on what we want or what we need, or what we already have and what fits in the system in terms of priorities. This comes with asset management plan, it's interrelated with strategic planning. There's, uh, you have to really marry some things here, and we're not yet there, and we want to get there. Great. Thank you very much, Mr. CAO. Uh, so we're fifteen minutes remaining before we're done tonight. Shall we start at least briefly another part, or? Is everything fine? How, how long do we think the next part is? It's inaudible. Well, I have Counselor Jermyn, uh, Janice, who is asking a question on the water budget. I would like to propose adjournment after the, the water budget. We're not going to just start something halfway, just to repeat the next tomorrow night. That's why, that's why I wanted to know. If there's something that would take five minutes to present, well, it would take me five minutes. Madam Deputy Mayor, question on the water budget, yes. I am looking, you know how I'm not so strong on figures? With the budget as it's presented, it's not a large amount, but we're putting a small amount in the reserve for capital and water. What is our reserve right now? Do we have reserves? It's not mentioned anywhere unless I missed it. Maybe we can share the amount we have in reserve? I don't know it right offhand. It will come back up tomorrow. I won't be there tomorrow night, but they can, they can tell me later. I won't be there tomorrow. Inaudible, great. With that, I would need somebody to move the adjournment. So we're adjourned for the evening.